And Todd, if Scott won't let me over in the planning office, you've got to come over to my office next time.
Come over here, we've got to share screens cameras. Okay, all right, it is 4:50 PM. So, welcome. The November 5th, 2020 meeting of the Baltimore County Planning Board is now called. My name is Scott Phillips and I'm the chairman of the board. We will start with a roll call to account for the members of the board present on this call. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Schweitzer. Yes, Mr. Schweitzer.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Panero. No, see, Ms. Kate, Mr. Hartman.
Aye.
Mr. Halapka. Ms. Hafford.
Aye.
Ms. Wolfson. Ms. Wolfson, Mr. McGinnis.
Aye.
Switching over, Mr. Heckman.
Aye.
Mr. Heinel. Mr. Perlow. Mr. Warren.
Aye.
And Mr. Caligari. Am I missing?
Kathy's on now.
Ms. Wolfson.
Yes.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Thank you all for joining us today. Can I ask you to please stand with me beside the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the republic, the republic of the states, and to the republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Davis. Are there any changes to our agenda today?
No, Mr. Chairman, there are no changes to the agenda that's published.
Thank you. So, board members, in your October 29th email, you received the October 15th, 2020 meeting. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the draft minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Chair will entertain a motion for the acceptance of the minutes.
Motion.
It's been moved by Mr. Warren and seconded by Mr. Schweitzer. Are there any unreadiness? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed to have the same right, not hearing any, carries. And the minutes are adopted. We're going to now move into our first item on the agenda, which is the county legislation of interest to the board. Mr. Davis, please fill us in on the legislation recently passed by the Baltimore County Council.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, there are five items, or excuse me, four items, starting with Bill 9920, which is for the parking of commercial vehicles, and it's for the purpose of prohibiting parking of certain vehicles in the Maryland 43 overlay district, and providing certain parking restrictions on certain vehicles at specific times, and generally relating to vehicle parking. Bill 100-20, which is for design review areas, and it's for the purpose of requiring the design review panel to review development plans for proposed non-residential and residential developments located in certain areas of Towson, and generally relating to the review of developments by the design review panel. Resolution 111-20, which is the designation for the historic East Towson Design Review Area, and it's a resolution to designate the historic East Towson Design Review Area, the boundaries of which are shown on the map accompanying the resolution. The area is designated as a design review area for residential and non-residential development pursuant to Bill 100-20. The newly designated area will supersede the previously adopted map dated October 12th, 2016, known as the East Towson Design Review Area. And finally, Resolution 118-20 is to authorize or pre-approve contracts of sale, purchase of a warehouse facility related to COVID-19. And this is a resolution to authorize and pre-approve for Baltimore County to negotiate and enter into a contract of sale for the purchase of a warehouse facility in an amount not to exceed $7.5 million for activities to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus crisis only. And that's, those are the items, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Were there any questions for Mr. Davis? If not, we're going to move for an adjournment of the meeting. The chair will take a motion, and please note that we have a hearing that is scheduled at 5:00 PM. Following the adjournment of this meeting, we'll take a brief pause, and we will begin exactly at 5:00 PM. So, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
So, move on, Mr. Schweitzer, second.
Second.
Second about Mr. Warren, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Most have the same right. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much, and we'll see you in five minutes. All right, good evening and welcome, everyone. I would ask you, if you are not speaking, to please place your device on mute. If you're not speaking, please place your device on mute. Welcome, everyone, and this is the public hearing that is now being called to order. My name is Scott Phillips, and I'm the chairman of the planning board. Tonight, the planning board will conduct a public hearing for two items. First, the board will hear testimony on the amendment to the 10-year solid waste plan, office building recycling. Immediately following, the board will hear testimony on the agricultural buildings' value-added agricultural uses. Starting out, I would like to take note of the board members who are present this evening. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Schweitzer.
Aye.
Ms. Panero. Mr. Hartman.
Aye.
Mr. Halapka.
Aye.
Ms. Hafford.
Aye.
Ms. Wolfson. Ms. Wolfson, I see you speaking.
Aye.
I got, thank you. Mr. McGinnis. Mr. McGinnis, I don't see Mr. McGinnis, okay. Mr. Heckman.
Aye.
Mr. Heinel. I know Mr. Heinel is trying to get into the meeting. I will come back. Mr. Perlow.
Aye.
Mr. Heinel is there. Uh, Mr. Perlow, Mr. Warren.
Aye.
And Mr. Caligari. Mr. Caligari is also with us. We've got a little challenge, technical challenge. Uh, so I have pretty much everyone, I believe we counted four. Mr. McGinnis is coming in. He's here. Mr. McGinnis is here. Thank you. If I didn't state your name, if I missed you, please let me know. So, thank you. At this time. Oh, excuse me, let me go back, okay. Uh, our first item. At the board's October 15th, 2020 meeting, Mr. Richard Keller from Department of Public Works introduced the amendment to the 10-year solid waste plan, office building recycling. Mr. Keller is here to further present the amendment to the board. After Mr. Keller has finished his presentation, I will call on those who have registered. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Keller. Mr. Chairman, thank you. If you're not speaking, if I could ask you to please place your devices on mute.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here this evening to explain this amendment to the 10-year plan. Crystal, do you, uh, okay, Chris is putting the, uh... I'm waiting for, for my PowerPoint to come up. Thank you very much. Uh, once again, my name is Richard Keller. I'm with the Baltimore County Department of Public Works. I'm in the Bureau of Solid Waste Management and in the Recycling Division. If we can go to the next slide. So, the 10-year solid waste plan is a plan that the county has to develop following the COMAR regulations, and the main purpose of the 10-year plan is to ensure that we have solid waste management strategies in place for a 10-year period, and that we have adequate capacity to be able to handle all of the materials that are handled within the county. Maryland Department of the Environment approves the plan and plan amendments, and the current plan covers the years 2019 through 2028. Next slide, please. And Baltimore County is required to amend its plan to reflect new legislation, the annotated code of Maryland Environmental Article, Section 9-1703. Next slide. In 2019, a new state law was passed under Maryland Senate Bill 370, Section 9, 1714, the environmental article annotated code of Maryland. It requires collection and recycling of recyclable materials from office buildings that have 150,000 or more square feet of office space. And basically, the owner must provide recycling receptacles and a system to remove the recyclables, and these items must be in place by October 1st, 2021. Next slide. The owners' corporate management companies and tenants must recycle at minimum cardboard, mixed paper, plastics, and metal. And we have provided examples of the acceptable recyclables at BaltimoreCountyMaryland.gov/solidwaste. In some cases, this will vary depending on who their end market is. They're also responsible for providing all containers, labor, and equipment to fulfill the requirement of the law. They must ensure collection and transportation to markets. Next slide. At the time that this implementation was started, the State Department of Assessments and Taxations identified approximately 20 applicable buildings that need to comply with the law, and newly constructed buildings with 150,000 or more square feet that are, uh, with occupancy permits after the law takes effect shall participate within three months of the county notifying them about the requirements of the law. And the county plans to check the SDAT records on or before October 1st of each year. Next slide, please. The owner, corporate management company, or tenants will be responsible for monitoring the program. The county may require the owner to submit a Maryland Recycling Act report each year, and that report describes how much recycling that they've done. It includes the tonnages removed from the office buildings and the markets for the materials. And the county will notify the owners, corporate management companies, or tenants of applicable buildings of the requirements of the law as appropriate. Next slide. We are accepting written comments for the next 35 days. DeAndrea Walker, for those of you who do not know, is the new acting director of the Department of Public Works. Uh, once that's completed, we will finalize the 10-year plan amendment language. It will require a county council review and vote, county executive review and sign-off, and then MDE review and final decision on the proposed amendment. And that is the conclusion of my presentation. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions? I do not see any questions in the chat box. Any questions?
I have a question. What triggers the, the county to ins- inspector, um, review a building's, um, compliance with this? I believe that the term was May, the county May, um, it's like a couple slides ago.
Okay, so, the, the... Let me, let me back up. What we may do is ask them to, um, come, to submit a report on the amount of recycling that they're doing. We have not made a decision on whether or not we're going to do that. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
I just wondered what, what would trigger something like that.
I think what would trigger it would be our interest in obtaining the data from them on how much recycling is being done. That Maryland Recycling Act report goes to the Department of the Environment every year, and we have to provide information on what is happening, both on the residential side and the commercial side. And in that particular case, we would, we may decide to do that in order to collect more data.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
And... Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Hi, Howard Perlow. I'd like to ask him a question, if I might.
Sure.
Where did the 150,000 square foot of a building, um, come from? You say there's only 20 buildings, I think you say, right now.
That is, that is approximately 20 buildings. That was a legislative decision. That was not a county decision.
That was a state legislative?
Correct.
I guess I have a problem with it. I don't know whether it's something that we're absolutely being told by the state, we have to pass this law. I guess I have a problem in that it starts with $150,000, $150,000 square foot building. All of a sudden, it becomes 100,000 square foot buildings, then it becomes 50,000 square foot buildings. And who ends up paying for this is not really the landlord, but the tenants. If the tenants... I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, the tenant ends up paying for it because they're paying CAM, they're paying common area maintenance, they're paying all the cost over a base year. So, the landlord is going to push that through to the tenants, which are going to raise whatever cost they have in whatever profession they're in. And, um, it's just another thing that, you know, is put on the business person at that point, understanding the need for recycling. But the cost of it is going to be fairly substantial. You know, uh, again, I think it's going to become expandable to the entire, you know, business community. And I guess I have a problem with that.
Um, I'm, I'm not going to pass judgment or suggest anything in terms of what, uh, the legislature should or shouldn't do. I don't know whether this is something that will eventually, as you say, decrease in size and, and continue to move forward. I think we'll have to wait and see what the legislature does.
Should that answer your question, Howard?
Not really, because I do think that it's going to be a, an added cost to tenants, um, in all kinds of buildings. It doesn't tell me that it's just office. It doesn't tell me that it's all of a sudden going to be every shopping center and every, um, you know, car dealership and whoever it might be. You know, again, understanding that the world needs to recycle, but, you know, who should be the one really paying it? If you, I guess until I heard the word tenant, I was okay if it was really the landlord. But I just know that that's, you know, that's who it's going to be passed through to, is the tenants at that point. And that, and that concerns me.
Well, who, who picks up the trash from these buildings right now? If it's not going to recycling, it's, it's trash, and that's not free, right?
No, that's being picked up by private companies that are, you know, picking up the trash. But we're not, you know, I'm a tenant. I'm not expected to, in this particular building where I am, to recycle various different kinds of papers and keep different trash cans and, you know, even, even the maintenance crews that have to come in are going to have to be paid more to separate this trash as well. And, you know, I, I just know where it's going to get passed off to, and ultimately, it does get passed off to the consumer, probably in higher prices for whatever it might be. So, you know, if you tell me that the landlords are paying it, I guess I'd be okay with it, but I'm not sure that I am, you know, if it's passed all, all the way down the line.
Again, it's ultimately the owners that would be required to, to pay for it. Hang on one second, let me get my glasses on to go back and look at the specific language. Owners, corporate management companies, and tenants must recycle. Um, but there'll be, um... Each owner must provide recycling receptacles and a system to remove recyclables. So, the responsibility in the specific language is on the owner.
I would tend to disagree, because all of the pass-throughs that we pay for, taxes, insurance, every expense after a base year gets passed on to tenants.
I'm not, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you. But again, the specific language of the law says that, that it is the owners that must provide this, the service.
So, Howard, on this one, I think you heard clearly, and we all heard, that this is a, a state requirement. We're making some recommendations on, I believe, Mr. Keller, on how this will be implemented, how we will meet the mandate of the state. Is that correct?
Um... Right, right.
By enacting, by enacting this, with, without, with your recommendation, we are acknowledging and accepting the fact that in Baltimore County, we need to meet this requirement.
Oh, that is correct.
Okay.
I mean, there's, there's no doubt that, there's no doubt that we need to meet this requirement. And in fact, that's why we're here this evening, because it's a requirement to add it to the 10-year solid waste plan.
Correct, and that's what we...
Mr. Chairman, can we ask there that the PowerPoint that he provided and/or a copy of the law be provided to all of us? Because we really don't see that in the action summary, you know, what he was reading from and what we, um, saw on the PowerPoint. I'd like to have that.
That's a, a fair request. You've made it...
I, I will forward a copy to you for, for, um, for, for you to use, and I will get a copy of the law as well.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. All right, any other questions, Mr. Keller?
Not for me.
Not hearing any other questions. We do not have anyone signed up, uh, to speak on this issue this evening, and I do not see any comments in the chat. So, we want to thank everyone. The planning board will take into consideration the comments from the staff this evening and any materials that we receive on this issue. Thank you all, and we are going to move on now. We will, um, hear, once again, the staff's recommendations and, uh, tentatively schedule for a vote on November the 19th, 2020, uh, on this particular issue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to present this evening.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Keller. We appreciate it. We're going to move on to the second item, agricultural buildings' value-added agricultural uses. Uh, Resolution Number 12-20. When I didn't hear Mr. McGinnis, I was thinking that could not be possible. We're dealing with our farmers and our equestrians, so between Mr. McGinnis and Ms. Wolfson, I am sure you all are ready to ask a number of questions on this issue. So, our next item, testimony on agricultural buildings' value-added agricultural uses, Resolution Number 12-20. At the board's October 15th, 2020 meeting, Mr. Wally Lippincott from the Department of Planning presented an overview of the agricultural buildings' value-added agricultural uses. Mr. Lippincott, along with Ms. Megan Benjamin and Mr. Joseph Wiley, are here to further present on this topic. After staff is finished with their presentation, I will call on those who have registered to testify on this topic. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Lippincott and Mr. Benjamin, and, oh, excuse me, Ms. Benjamin, my apologies, and Mr. Wiley.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Megan Benjamin. I am a Northern Sector Planner in the Department of Planning, and I will be presenting tonight along with Joe Wiley, also a Northern Sector Planner, and Wally Lippincott, who is our senior, uh, Northern Sector Planner. We will be reporting on the recommendations of the value-added agricultural buildings work group, and even though there are three of us, we do promise to be free. Next slide. The work group was created in response to County Council Resolution 12-20, which was passed on January 6th of this year, which requested the planning board to examine how other jurisdictions treat the construction modification and alteration of agricultural buildings for value-added agricultural purposes, and to make recommendations on how Baltimore County can best balance the interests of public safety, historical and agricultural preservation, as well as the present and future business interests of Baltimore County farmers. Next slide. So, to give, uh, the broader context, Baltimore County is part of an important, larger agricultural region, which includes over 600,000 acres of permanently preserved farmland in the region, uh, which is centered around Lancaster County in Pennsylvania. A recent report indicated that the agricultural, uh, economy in Baltimore County contributed around $300 million annually to Baltimore County's economy. And the map that you are seeing, um, shows a sampling of the value-added agricultural sites throughout the county, which include farmers' markets, um, farm wide... which include farmers markets, um, farm wineries and breweries, uh, sites that are selling, farm sites that are selling direct to consumers and, uh, some that are holding agricultural festivals and other educational events. Next slide. So public participation is a vital component of the value-added agricultural. Um. Businesses and the direct-to-consumer aspect is key and is a real challenge that the work group focused on. The chart is showing the various levels of public access that are typically seen at value-added sites, as well as listing the various limitations and regulations that can be relevant. And again, a real challenge of this project centered on these public interactions and the various rules that apply. Next slide. The work group, uh, was composed, had twenty-seven members as well as planning staff. We met, uh, seven times, seven meetings from June through September. Some were full group meetings and there were some smaller breakout group sessions as well. And in addition, we gathered members' input and comments between and after the meeting. And, uh, as you can see here, we had representative, um, farm businesses, consultants and community groups. Next slide. We had external agency representatives. Next slide. Representatives from, uh, county agencies. Next slide. And planning staff as well. And next slide. So the recommendations and the input that came from the work group, we categorized into four main categories that we will go into more detail on. The categories were uses and definitions, codes, clarity and processes. And with that, I will turn it over to Joe to discuss the analysis and the recommendations related to you.
Uh, good evening, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Joseph Wiley. I'm a planner for Department of Planning. Um, so in our analysis, we started looking at twelve other jurisdictions. We looked at three here in Maryland, uh, Carroll County, Frederick County and Montgomery County. And we reached our, we looked for other jurisdictions that were close to Baltimore County as in size or as in type, uh, next to highly urbanized areas. Um, we found a couple. We thought two in California, San Diego County and Sonoma County, three in Michigan, Bingham County, Long Lake and Pittsfield. And we also looked at three in Virginia, which is Arbomarle, Loudoun County and Rockham County. Excuse me. Um, in the research, we looked into the different zoning regulations, uh, examples of they allowed weddings, breweries. Um, in them, if agriculture buildings had exemption processes or if they were fully exempt or they allowed special exceptions, and also if there were any kind of changes in the building codes. And also if we could, we also looked to see if they allowed, if they had, um, Budsmans or dedicated agricultural websites. And then we compiled them, but they are listed out in the, uh, the report. In that, we kind of felt a corresponding theme throughout all the different counties. We, we kind of proposed, um, three different levels of uses in our, from our research. Um, if we can go to the next, please. Um, so in these three uses, um, we have three different levels. Uh, we propose that level one be commercial agriculture. Um, we would like to propose this is to be currently as it is defined in the BCZR, um, kind of break that down. It's if you're growing, harvesting, storing, processing of materials grown or livestock raised on site, everything would be allowed by rate. Um, public access, it, public access, access is limited to just sales such as a produce stand or you pick of items that are produced on site and they're typically for off-site consumption of. Uh, next, please. Uh, so level two, uh, we call it commercial agriculture value-added. It is commercial agricultural as defined in level one, but with the added of public access for tours, education or sales. So we would like to limit these to farm or forest-related events such as hayrides, farm visits, roadside stands. Um, or the, the biggest change would be to value-added items or craft beverages with a limitation of fifty people. That would be on the property, not just in a building. So if somebody went to open a small farm brewery, limited to fifty people, then they would, any of these uses would be underneath a conditional use. Um, we are thinking about possible conditions that can be put on the property, but we, we don't have anything nailed down yet. Uh, next, please. And level three would be the most intensive uses, um, is commercial agricultural farm-related activities. Uh, this would be the agricultural, commercial agriculture is defined in level one. Uh, plus the public access and activities permitted in level two. Um, but these also would include riding stables and equestrian centers and any value-added items or craft beverages that would allow greater than fifty people on the property and also allow non-agricultural festivals, but these would need a special exception from the county. And.
Thank you, Joe. Uh, this is Wally Lippincott, also a planner in the Department of Planning, and thank you, Megan. Uh, so I'm going to pick up with the codes. Um, and I, I particularly want to thank John Bryant and Lieutenant Day Fire Department and Kevin Addicks on the codes. Um, there's a lot of complexity, obviously, in the codes, um, and we'll kind of give you an overview. And we're going to show you that a recommendation is going to be, there needs to be further in-depth work to tease some of these issues out. Um, so that a lot of the background, particularly for this effort, came from interest in trying to utilize existing, uh, agricultural buildings on the landscape. Baltimore County is blessed with just a terrific cultural landscape with wonderful old bank barns and other ag buildings. Um, however, most of those are not useful, uh, to current agricultural practices with the large size of their equipment, the tractors and harvesters and all that kind of, uh, material, uh, equipment. So, you know, if, if there isn't an adaptive reuse for these buildings, then them, a lot of them are just going to fall down. Um, at the same time, um, as indicated in the resolution, um, we have to make sure that there is public safety is protected, uh, for people to utilize these buildings. So the county, again, has tried in an earlier resolution, fifty-seven nineteen, to piggyback on the state code, which allows exemption for ag buildings, for agrotourism, we're calling it value-added, for up to two hundred people. And the county expanded it out to three hundred people. However, this didn't really solve all the other issues in the codes, in the building code. So we can go to the next slide, please. All right. So, and as many of you know, who are involved in the building industry, much more so than, than several of us, um, buildings, uh, and this is an example on your right of, uh, Borden. And again, you can just see these, the, uh, the beauty of these iconic buildings of Baltimore County that we're really lucky to have. And, and again, how great an opportunity there are is to reuse them and let the public enjoy and have access to the countryside that the county has invested significantly in protecting. Um, so buildings are governed and the types of codes are governed by several things. One is a use group. There is no use group for an agricultural building. But ag buildings, uh, incorporate several different types of activity. Um, they're multipurpose generally. There's storage and office, mercantile, manufacturing, assembly. So in determining which codes to apply, you can see that they would be numerous. Uh, so one of the suggestions is there be developed an agricultural building, uh, specific code, use code for that, for that category. Next slide, please. Uh, the next two is, uh, buildings are given an occupancy load, and this has a great deal to do with particularly fire codes. Uh, so again, I mean, and you're seeing another, uh, beautiful building we have on the, on the landscape. So these large bank barns. The challenge here is that the physical dimension of these buildings, uh, if you go strictly on that for determining occupancy load, which is the way it's typically done, um, that can greatly exceed the intent of that particular grower producer. Uh, and can ultimately result in economic require, I mean, requirements for, uh, elevators, um, uh, fire, other fire things such as, uh, sprinklers and, and other doors and et cetera, um, that could exceed the, uh, financial ability of the business to make a go of it. So this is, of course, again, there is no suggestion to diminish public safety. But the question is, can we, uh, find a way to address occupancy load that really reflects on the proposed use, not on that physical dimension of that building? Uh, and the third one is just the international building codes in general. Uh, there are a lot of references in the code, uh, not necessarily clear about, um, that, that can be interpreted to apply to these buildings and again, can greatly in cost, increase the cost of a, uh, producer, a value-added producer trying to provide, uh, these products to the public. And again, these products are something people seek, uh, they provide a, an experience that, um, the growers really tie to what they're doing. This is a lavender, uh, farm you're looking at and, and that experience of people to come out and harvest or, or to use lavender, et cetera, is, is what it's all about in this, uh, new agricultural business. Next slide, please. All right. The other category of ag buildings, um, is, uh, new, new buildings. So we've had exemption for new buildings, uh, agricultural buildings for quite some time. Uh, and this came out of some challenges and discussions we had, again, ten, fifteen years ago. And it was resolved to have an ex, a general exemption for a new agricultural building. Unfortunately, and somewhat recently, we've had issues with this. We've had folks who have very limited amount of agriculture on their property or in their proposed building, taking advantage of this, um, this exemption and avoiding a building permit. And then in, in so doing, they often are not, uh, locating the building correctly with respect to septic or well, or even step backs to streams, et cetera. Um, the other concern of, uh, of the communities has been that folks will get approval for an ag building and then morph it into something more intensive. Um, and thirdly, on the landowner's standpoint, the rules aren't clear. They call the county, they go to the, get sent to the permits, permit sends them to us. Sometimes they get sent to zoning. It's just not clear what the rules are. Next slide, please. So the committee, uh, work group considered three remedies. Uh, first was to try to close the loopholes by rewarding the existing exemption, which is broad. The second to require a notification, uh, form to be submitted, which is done in some other jurisdictions. As Joe described, we found that Frederick County requires a notification. And thirdly was to require an approval process. Next slide, please. So for the closing the loophole, um, what we proposed, and we really think this will, um, reduce a significant amount of the, uh, folks who are avoiding, uh, going through the typical permit process. So basically, we're proposing that the words exclusively for commercial agriculture and primarily for agricultural production be added to that exemption. Um, okay, next slide, please. Then the second would be for a notification so that folks who are, um, who are applying, um, provide a worksheet and we'll be, this will be kept on record, uh, and they would be signing and indicating that this would be print, again, corresponding with the language, new language that we principally use for agriculture, and that is indeed on a farm, and they would also provide perhaps, I mean, a sketch plan of the floor plan. So it could be, you know, we would have that on record. There was a general consensus for the notification. Uh, there was no dissent at all for the exemption language. Uh, for the third condition of requiring approval, however, there were objections principally by, uh, the commercial, um, I want to say commodity-type agriculture and, and as well as, um, um, the nursery business folks. So with that proposal that was discussed was to require an approval, but that is not recommended in the report at this time. Uh, the consensus is let's, you know, work with these first two and see if we can solve the issues of protecting, um, you know, the, the, protecting, um, the intent of the exemption. Next slide, please. Again, as, uh, Megan alluded to in the beginning, it was the clarity. Um, so when the clarity is for, again, we want to encourage, um, these agricultural businesses. Uh, we want to get them in Baltimore County. We see that they're occurring in other counties. We want to be competitive. We've got a great, um, set of, uh, rural resources. Uh, so we want people to be able to easily access where they can find out informations for grants, for the process. And to do that, it's recommended that the county have a website that helps to, um, guide people to, um, to what's we, to what are, what we can do to assist them in locating in Baltimore County. Um, and the second from a process would be, is to propose to reinstitute a non-budsperson. Um, for many years, Baltimore County had a part-time employee in the economic development who was specialized in agriculture. So that is being suggested to be, um, occur again, uh, and that that person have an agricultural background and also that that person be, spend some portion of their time at the agricultural center. So they're readily accessible to the ag community. Next slide, please. So the report that we have in front of you, again, is sketching out the things that we are hoping that you will support and then that the council will then also support and therefore direct that there'll be a, a pro temp type committee, uh, that will then get into the details of things such as Joe, Joe referenced, uh, into developing actual, uh, standards, uh, for conditional use permits, um, and to get into the code information, which is, uh, quite involved. And we would hope that those would include all the representatives of the different agricultural industries as well as community groups and other interested folks. So at this time, that, uh, concludes our presentation. Um, we'd be happy to answer any questions or comments.
Any questions from members of the board?
Wilson? Yes, thank you. I, I am very concerned about the agricultural building, you know, the possibility that it wouldn't have to go through, um, a, a, a process, an approval, uh, through code enforcement. Um, since they, any agricultural, but cultural building at any time could be converted in the future. Um, you know, through this, after this legislation's enacted, if this legislation is enacted, you know, but by that time, the proverbial horse will have left the barn. And now you've got a building that wasn't intended to be used for events or, you know, it's other public purposes that is too close to a stream and is too, you know, out of compliance for, for general public use. I mean, at that point, would you prohibit that landowner from using that building for a, for repurposing that building? If, say it's the next landowner.
Right. They would have to meet all the requirements for whatever that additional use would be. So if it's a conditional use, they'd have to go through meeting those standards that were developed for it. Or if it's requires a special exception, then they're going to have to go through all those. So they're going to have to meet the environmental standards, the zoning standards and all the building code standards for people to occupy, just as they do now. I mean, we have those older buildings out on the landscape, and that's why we're, we worked on this report is because they can't get a, a green light from the county to take on people in it because they haven't met all the required codes. So I hear you, you know, we heard, hear your concern. Uh, as I said, the commercial ag was, um, you know, spoke and have for things like greenhouses and, uh, large equipment sheds, um, have sought and retained that. And we're proposing they retain that right of that being a, for an ag building.
And, and the other thing is that taking the special exception requirement out of it takes the public out of the process as far as notification of neighbors and, um.
Well, actually, that's this, we use this same techniques. I wish I could say we were creative, uh, back when we had issues with, uh, the nursery operations, which also changed, the industry changed dramatically fifteen years ago. And there was a lot of, um, there were conflicts with truck traffic to adjacent neighbors. So in that, we developed three different levels, much as we're doing now. And the inner, and the middle level was these use permits, which is, it's a nice tool. And the inner, and the middle level was these use permits, which is, is a nice tool. It includes the opportunity to create specific standards that go in the code in section 404. And they also requires posting of the property. So when the property's posted, if anyone has an issue or if an accounting agency has an issue, then it does go to a hearing. But we are not, we're not suggesting that the more intensive uses, a, a large scale brewery or a large scale, you know, what would be a riding stable that would take on a lot of people and potentially have a lot of traffic, those would continue to go through the special exception process to provide a customized type of conditions depending upon the site conditions.
Well, I was recently at a corn maze in Frederick County, which was, you know, fortunately for them, it was located right at near the Route 70 exit 240A near Frederick. So, you know, it wasn't traveling through back roads or anything, but on a Saturday, there must have been almost a thousand people there. Is that something that this, this bill is cup, will cover? How will that bill cover that?
Well, that's a, that's a good question. We certainly hope that our businesses will be successful, although that, you're right, that nut level could over, you know, could exceed some of the capabilities. The, as I said, in the conditional use situation, what they've done in Virginia, particularly for the horse operations, is they've said that the access to the operation has to be off of either an arterial or a collector road. So that would avoid what you're talking about, you know, if everybody's going to travel down, you know, a road that's got 50 people living on it and, and clog up their street and jeopardize their quality of life or, you know, those things would be addressed through that conditional use standard. So these point, your points are excellent and that's why we, we say that this really needs to have a great deal more work done to, to flesh out these details. And that's where that pro temp committee, and they would come back with legislation through you all and to the council.
Thank you, Wally.
So Wally, what I'm hearing you say, where we've come to is we need more study. And so the recommendation is not to go back with, do it this way, is to come back with, we need more study.
Right. Plus we want your blessing that we're heading in the right direction. So the, the points that were just raised by Mr. Wolfson are very, are very important. You know, if there's, you know, feeling that, you know, we're going in the wrong direction, let's, let's pick, let's get into that now and redirect.
Understood.
Well, I just have to say, I was pretty impressed and I think it's great that you are trying to look to monetize some of this open space. So I think that's great.
Thank you.
And I'm very, I'm very thankful that you're allowing farms to expand on what they did in the past, like Boardy's and other vineyards to have events because it really helps the mountain supports them a lot.
Mr. Halupka?
Just a, more of a clarification. In the, the initial presentation, did I, did I hear them say that agriculture accounts for 300 million in Baltimore County's economy?
That was the number that was in the presentation. Wally, do you want to comment on that?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear. I couldn't hear the question.
The question, the question was, in the presentation, you noted that agriculture accounts for $300 million in Baltimore's, Baltimore County's economy. And my thought, Mr. Halupka, is, is that, is, is that, is that an understatement? Is that was your, your question?
Two, one, was I hearing it correctly? And then two, what's the denominator? What is the size of Baltimore County's economy?
Did you get that?
I didn't get the second part, but I got the first part.
Okay. And so the second part was if $300 million is the impact, what is Baltimore County's economy? What is the denominator?
I'm not sure I know the distinction, but the 300 million is a number that, that we've used. We haven't had a recent economic analysis, but that number is based upon the, the, well, the state of Maryland does a economic analysis of agriculture as does, based on the U.S. Census, which is updated for agriculture every five years. So from that information, we could calculate what the value was for grain production, nurseries, horticulture. But, and one of the biggest parts of our, our number of agriculture is, is horses and equine and thoroughbred. That number we have not had updated in many, many years. So that's an estimate. So, and that is our largest economic producer. We are, we do not have in there the value of the value added. So again, don't, and that would be something that would be good to, to do an economic analysis of. I don't, I don't know, Mr. Halupa, if I've answered your question or not.
It answered the first part, but I guess what I'm curious about is 300 million sounds like a lot, but is county's economy 1 billion or 20 billion or 40 billion?
Right.
I'm just trying to get a sense of scale. I mean, I thought I saw somewhere the county's economy is like 42 billion. If that's the case, 300 million is less than 1%. Trying to get a sense of scale.
Right. I don't know that number for countywide. We can get that number for you.
I think that's a fair question and we ought to get it. And while it also says to me, we need to get an updated economic impact analysis for farming and that number should probably be more inclusive of the value add and some of the other things that we do not take into consideration currently today. That sounds like a number that is used for more, what I would call traditional farming revenues, if you will. And there's, is now I think there's a lot more taking place in our northern county, up county, western county areas. So.
And Chairman Phillips, the other thing that people don't take into consideration is I run a farmer's market as long as there, and there's also 12 other farmer's markets in Baltimore County. All the people that employs.
Yes.
That's a number that people, that we're not taking into consideration.
Yeah. I, I, I would argue that that $300 million is probably extremely conservative.
I agree. I agree.
Any other questions of Mr. Lippincott or his colleagues? Mr. Schweitzer?
Got a question. And this is probably, I'm just, just asking because it's probably right, right out there on the toe and on a periphery, but what we're talking, the presentation here are very interesting and very informative. For the, for the established florists and nurseries that are in the, you know, not, they're actually away from, they're, they're in a more dense, densely populated area of Baltimore County. Does this have any impact whatsoever on, on their operations or their expansions in terms of what the requirements are?
No.
Okay. And that, that's a good thing. Good, no is good. I like, I'm glad to hear that. That's fine. I just, I just, I wasn't sure, but I thought I need to ask.
But it is, it's a good question. It is interesting. I don't know how many people know how, how large the florist industry, the flower industry was in Baltimore County, you know, much like even like the dairy, dairies. It is interesting that there are many of these small farms and appreciate the point about maybe we're underestimating the economic. A lot of the small farms are getting back into selling fresh flowers. They're placed farmer's markets, you can get fresh flowers. And there are some folks who are now in the business of only distributing fresh flowers. And we have currently a request from one of our perennial producers who's trying to move into shipping more and packaging and making sure everything gets on out on the web. So there, there is a lot of real creativity in that and agriculture's adjusting, and that's why we need to do this report and do these efforts to adjust our rules and codes and regulations to bring in the conformance with the reality of economics and farming now.
Thank you, Wally.
So board members, I want to do this, we usually go right into public testimony. I've given everyone an opportunity to kind of begin asking Wally questions now. You'll have another opportunity before we take a vote, but I do want to give the public an opportunity to share any comments that they have. So I will call on those who have completed the online registration posted on the board's website to speak on this topic in the order that you've registered. Those who wish to provide written testimony during the hearing and do so by typing your comment to the host in the chat box and the comments will be read to the board members during the hearing. Please refer to the on-screen instructions for entering comments and procedures for speaking during the hearing. Speakers, please, please remember to limit your comments to two minutes or less. We have four persons who have signed up in accordance with our rules this evening. I'll read each of their names and ask them to be prepared to speak after the person in front of them. Ms. Teresa Moore from the Valley's Planning Council, Renee Hamidi from the Manor Conservancy, Lynn Jones, Sparks Glen, Sparks Glenco Community Planning Council, and Kevin Addicks. Those are our four speakers this evening. We'll start with Ms. Teresa Moore, Valley's Planning Council.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to unmute Ms. Teresa Moore. And just as a reminder, all speakers have two minutes to speak. I'll say time and at the time, please wrap up your comments. Thank you. So Ms. Moore.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I also had the opportunity to serve on the committee and just wish to commend the planning staff. They really did a good job in a relatively short amount of time. And I was able to put this out to my board and I got some quick feedback from them, but I was glad to hear tonight from Wally that there's going to be this recommendation to go through this with a finer comb because that was pretty much the, the feedback I got from people. Everyone is, you know, very interested in helping farmers and agriculture and during COVID, we know that being able to get out on some of these places was really a godsend for a lot of people. One of the things that I did get opinions back on was changing alcohol processing from special exception to a by right use. And while we understand that processing of an agricultural product seems like it should be, you know, something, a regular routine part of agriculture, the concern is, is when you have alcohol consumption in public access, there's just a lot of variables there. And I guess the concern we had was, and I wasn't exactly sure how this was meant in the study because they said it was going to be smaller events and promotional events would be by conditional use, but it also sounded like there might be an exemption for that. So I thought that needed some clarification and we've just been finding that in practical circumstances, there's a lot of variation on what people interpret to be small or an event or, so I, I think there needs to be more specificity and I think what Wally is suggesting, that we flesh out the details more is the right way to go. Something that's not addressed in the report is amplified music and the amount of parking and, and those were, were brought up. I know under a malfeasance easement, if you're a brewery or winery. No, sorry. Well, I submitted in my writing, a letter.
And we have received, we have received a letter from Valley's Planning Council that has been distributed to the members of the board. So thank you, Ms. Moore. Our next speaker for this evening is Renee Hamidi from the Manor Conservancy.
Well, thank you so much. Thanks for the opportunity to speak, but I am not representing the Manor Conservancy tonight, just myself. And I'm going to piggyback on what Teresa had to say. I believe that under no circumstances should alcohol production be allowed by right or as a conditional use. I think farm breweries must continue to apply for a special exception. Otherwise, any landowner could grow a few hop plants, brew some beer and operate what would essentially be a bar, but without oversight by the liquor board. We can learn a lesson from the first farm brewery in the county that received a special exception. It was supposed to have a limited scope and scale that's now been far exceeded. It uses ag buildings that were modified for human occupation. Access is from an unlined country road. Upwards of a thousand people at a time visit the brewery. The scale is entirely inappropriate to the area. It adversely affects many of the neighbors. And while it might be considered value added ag, only about 1% of the farm is actually devoted to growing hops for the beer, while seven acres are devoted to parking. And by the way, this property also has Baltimore County ag easement. Tasting rooms, sales of finger foods and events to promote craft beverages should continue to require special exceptions. I think farm to table dinners, yoga and cooking lessons could receive a conditional use permit, but with a strict limitation on the number of attendees and frequency of events. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Hamidi. Our next speaker is Lynn Jones. Yes.
This is out, Mr. Wally. Do you mind if I just say one thing real quick?
Sure, go right ahead.
Just for clarification, the by right that, that we proposed for alcohol is production and for sales to take off-site. We're not proposing by right, any tasting rooms. So we're proposing, somebody wants to brew a beer and somebody can come buy it, take it home and drink it. So.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you for that clarification. Our next speaker this evening is Lynn Jones.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, good. Well, thank you very much for, for hosting this meeting and for all the work you and your staff have done up to this point. I think agriculture really needs to be well thought out as to how we're going to move forward. I'm representing Sparks Glenco and we did have some issues which basically were mirrored by Valley's Planning and Renee. We, we would like any kind of alcohol processing to continue to be a special exception. It's truly the only chance that any neighbors have as a forum to express their concerns. We also think a limitation of the winery and breweries would have to be available. The best place to hear each individual case is at the ALJ level. We wish that live music, loud live music, crowd size and traffic would all be part of the, the format for figuring this out. We also want more stringent definitions, even at the state level from the testimony we heard last week. State regulations for breweries and wineries were so, just kind of cooked up at the last minute. So, so the county really has nothing to fall back on to as far as their own regulations. They can with their zoning, but it's, it's a big question mark out there already. We, we think that the entire neighborhood should be considered for residential density and historic value of the area. I think those are important because due to the nature of alcohol processing, it's very different from say a greenhouse or a hayride. So once they're allowed in, they're going to stay in and it may very well. Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. And our last speaker for the evening is Kevin Addicks.
Good evening and thank you for the ability to address the group. Kevin Addicks with Grow and Fortify. I'm a Baltimore County resident, but also represent value added agricultural entities throughout the state. I want to thank the planning board for their work. It's, it's what they have done in the analysis of other jurisdictions far exceeds what we have seen in recent years with other jurisdictions that have revised their codes. So it's, it's commendable that they're looking around and not, not trying to reinvent the wheel all by themselves. They've, they've spent a lot of time in these committee and ad hoc committee meetings, trying to address all the concerns that have just been expressed by the previous three speakers. I did want to point out that the permitted use in this proposal is for alcohol, includes alcohol production and the selling of product akin to any other farm stand. There's no public accommodation, there's no onsite consumption. So it, it creates a new allowance in use, very different from what is currently under the special exception process. So if, if a winery, brewery, distillery, or any other type of value added agricultural entity wanted to accommodate the public, they would have to move out of that first level and into some form of review, whether it's conditional use for minor act. they would have to move out of that first level and into some form of review, whether it's conditional use for minor activity akin to what's happening now in the county with some of our wineries and breweries. It would go through a special exception. So I think it's very important to give alcohol, agricultural, all agricultural producers the ability to can their tomatoes, bottle their beer, whatever it might be, without having to go through the owner's special exception. Once it begins to impact the community, or their plans begin to in terms of public accommodation, certainly music, parking, et cetera, then it's completely reasonable to take it through a public hearing. I'm putting in the comment box a study that our group created this year. It's an economic impact study of all value-added ag. Happy to answer any questions, but thank you for your support.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that document with us, Mr. Addix. And Chris will capture that and make sure everyone at least has a link to it in correspondence to the board members in preparation for our next meeting and our vote. That ends the public testimony for this evening. Were there any other written comments, Chris, that came in? Thank you very much. You'll share that with our board members. Thank you to everyone who came to speak this evening, to the engagement of our board members, with staff on these issues.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is Chris. I just want to share with the board something that Mr. Mayhew brought up, and it goes back to Mr. Halupka's question on, I think, the size of the economy for Baltimore County. Mr. Mayhew, if you want to comment on this document that we're looking at.
Actual Baltimore County GDP.
Yeah, I just wanted to try to respond real quickly to Mr. Halupka's request. This is five years old, but it does point out.
49 billion dollars?
Yes. So we can forward this whole thing on to you, the board members, and see if we can.
44 billion, just to be.
For the impact of our agricultural economy as a contributor to Baltimore County's GDP. So that was the information that we're asking for. Hopefully, Wally, we can get some additional information, updated information on that impact. Thank you. All right. Once again, I want to thank everyone who came out to speak this evening. This was a lively conversation on our two issues, so I appreciate the board's engagement. And we'll consider these comments from this evening for our vote on November the 19th. There aren't any other comments from board members? We'll adjourn this public hearing. And I thank you all once again for participating. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Good night.